And so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. And so with that, we're going to start with the pledge. If you all will stand up, please. We should be getting really good at this by now. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Okay. We do have one public comment. We actually had two public comments, but with the special meeting, you have to adhere strictly to what's on the agenda as far as what the public comments can be. One public talk about that. But we do have one other public comment that, I guess, how do we do this? Bo, just read it?
Yes, sir, you can just read it.
Okay. So this is from Lori Turner, and it says, "Good evening, my ISD board. After looking at this agenda for this evening, I have these questions for you to consider in regards to your discussion of remote learning stipend for instructional staff due to COVID-19 pandemic. Number one, what money would be used for this stipend? Number two, what employees are getting this stipend? Because of the nature of different instructional positions, some employees are working extra hours and some are not hardly having to work at all. Would all get the same stipends? Number three, since supplies, paper, ink, et cetera, at the schools are not being used at this time, could money from these budgets be used for this? Number four, this year, the school board approved and is operating with a $4.4 million deficit. Would a teacher rather see a small stipend or see the district save these funds for future raises or other needs? Thank you, Lori Turner." Okay. We don't have any other public comments that relate to the specific agenda tonight. So we'll go ahead and go into the action items. The one and only action item that we have tonight is considering remote learning stipend for instructional staff due to COVID-19 pandemic. So I'll turn it over to you, Bo, if you want to give us kind of some of the analysis that you guys have done this week.
You hear me now? Sorry about that. Yes, as you just described, you know, we had a request from the board to consider providing a remote learning stipend to instructional staff. And so we've looked at that. We've looked at what some other districts have done as well in terms of providing some type of assistance to their instructional staff to offset costs of setting up home classrooms, remote learning, if they had to upgrade their internet service or provider service at home, or maybe their data plan for their cellphone, or even things like purchasing print cartridges for their printer, or maybe even purchasing a printer, things of this nature, as we have delved into remote learning and online classrooms. And so what we've presented for the board's consideration are two scenarios. Scenario one, which would be $300, basically $100 a month, March, April, and May. And those would be for teachers, counselors, APs, principals, instructional academic coaches, instructional support staff, dyslexia teachers, LSSPs, diagnosticians, visually impaired teachers, speech teachers. First scenario, you can see that totals out to about 675 people, and that's $202,500. The same individuals are included in the second scenario, which is $500 instead of the $300. And the cost for that is $337,500. And these funds are obviously not in the budget. It would require a budget amendment. And the school board's Montgomery ISD, the board's fund balance or savings account, as of the audited version of your budget, which was presented to the board in November, you have just right at $20 million in your savings account, and that's where these funds would come from. With that, I will open it up for discussion to the board.
Yeah, so we kind of talked a little bit about stipend versus reimbursement. Do you have any sense on that, Bo? Or, and the other question that I had was, what are other school districts doing?
Yes, we chose to go with the stipend as it was not as cumbersome process with the IRS. It's not taxable. And other school districts that I have seen recently included Segin, and I believe they gave $50. And Channel View, of course, our CFO, Chris Lynn's former district, they just did something similar. I haven't seen something in more than what we're considering, but those are the two that most recently have been made aware of.
So I guess what we need to talk about from the board, I think there's really two decisions. One is, are we going to give a stipend? That's the first question. And then the second question is, how much?
I would throw one other scenario in there just for your consideration. You know, this, the most difficult thing in trying to put this together was making a decision about which staff would be the most appropriate. Obviously, the board was wanting to target instructional staff, people who are continuing to work and daily and doing that from home. And there are individuals that are not included in there that the board might want to consider positions that would be, that you may want to consider and looking at. And that would include the nurses, there are 10 nurses, one at each campus is not included in there, librarians as well. So those would be some other positions, but again...
What about our cafeteria staff and all those folks that are...
No, sir, because the individuals who are working and keeping our food program going, they are, they have to come to work. They're being compensated under your pandemic leave policies. They're receiving comp time at this time for any time that's spent at work. And then if they're not able, obviously, to use that comp time, then the district would pay them. Other cafeteria and food service folks who are not coming in to run the food program are not being required to work at all and still receiving their check.
Makes sense. Do we have any, so you said librarians, you said...
Yes, there are librarians, nurses, and then you have district level folks that are working, your special programs people and things of that nature, who are putting a lot of additional time in as well. But the 10 nurses, 10 librarians, and those other positions are not included in that information.
Just missed you, but kind of blanked out there.
Yeah.
But the one question I had about that, Bo, is, how many additional staff are you talking about that could be included?
That'd be up to 35. And at 300, that's 10,500. And at 500, that's 17,500.
I guess I have a suggestion. If we're going to take money out of the fund balance, why don't we plan a raise for everybody next year instead of a stipend right now?
That's certainly a very valid suggestion and something that the board could consider. The board requested that we bring this forward for your consideration tonight.
I didn't know where we were taking the stipend out of, but if we're taking it out of savings, I think it would be more significant if we could give a raise.
Hey, Bo, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, in the preliminary budget review for next year, we had all, I thought, decided that it didn't look like a raise was in the cards because we were still projecting a $2 million deficit. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, you will have a budget workshop next week, of course, and that information will be presented. But at this point, we were still looking at a deficit budget for next year, and the compensation package would be brought to the board for your consideration. But anything that you would choose to give will add to the deficit budget.
I got some questions associated with this year's. Let's not go into next year's just yet. But at the end of March, we were about $4.5 million ahead of budget, which puts us back to nearly zero at the year end, right? We had a 4.4 million deficit, and we're looking to be $4.8 million ahead of that on the current burn rate. That being said, we also know that we don't have buses running right now. We don't have substitutes running right now. And of course, water utilities will stay in place, but water should go down. There's a bunch of costs that are going to be saved from not being in school. On the current burn rate, we're already at a surplus at the end of the year. How does that transpire into what we've been discussing as far as dipping into savings?
Yes, sir, you are correct in all of those statements. You know, because we would be basically adding to the budget, we would do a budget amendment, and that would require hitting the savings. But at the year end budget, we're certainly trending towards getting to an even budget. And so there is a chance that there could be surplus. Obviously, four out of the, three out of the last four years where we have adopted a deficit budget, we have put money into savings. We have not run a deficit. So that is a possibility. But again, we still have three months left to go, and so we don't have any detailed numbers on that. But this year's budget is certainly trending positive, as we expected it would. And then not being in school with things, you know, in the spring, it expensive in terms of a number of substitutes because of spring activities, people were gone, field trips, buses running, as you mentioned. So there are a lot of cost savings that are associated with us not being in school currently.
Is it safe to say, though, that my numbers are correct? That we're, at the end of March, on an annualized piece, we are $400,000 ahead of a zero breakeven budget with $400 to the surplus side? Is that correct, or have you looked at it in that manner?
I'm not comfortable giving, you know, those exact numbers or being in that... I don't, I don't know that we're going to end up exactly there, but yes, there is a high probability that we will get close to an even budget. Yes.
Could I ask, are we in a hurry to give this stipend? Because we got our teachers for another month.
Well, I think, and this is, this is Jim, I think the hurry was that we're trying, if we do this, if the board decides to do it, that we're trying to provide for the teachers right now to reimburse them for some of their out-of-pocket expenses that they may be having. I don't, I don't know that the intent, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that the intent was to use this as a way to give a bonus to teachers or any of the staff. It's really more of just a reimbursement for additional expenses that they're incurring because they're doing all this work at home. So because of that, that is why we're trying to do it now, because now is when they're incurring the expenses.
Is someone keeping up with the budgets that have not been spent, like the department budgets? And those are laying dormant right now? Is anybody keeping up with that?
Yes, ma'am. Chris Lynn is watching every single penny of that, and will be bringing that to you and your budget update next week as far as potential projections of where this year's budget...
I was just thinking, when we got those numbers, we might have the money that we don't, we might have so much money, we don't know, that we have not spent. It might make this decision easier, is what I'm saying, rather than going into the fund balance.
So I guess we haven't heard from David or Trey on this. Where are you guys at at this point?
I thought this was a reimbursement for short-term costs, not a long-term raise. Maybe I'm confused.
No, I think you're, I think that's it. That's where I was too, David, the reason why we were having this stipend or at least talking about it right now.
I'm all in favor of it, pardon me, Trey. I'm all in favor of it. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't mean to talk over you. I'm all in favor of it, but the fact that we've had three years of projected deficits and had three years of positive results is the result of good management. I don't think we ought to try to go and say, okay, for something that none of us really have much of a responsibility for or responsibility of, that we ought to go spending that over long-term raises. Stipend, I'm 100% in favor of.
I would agree with that. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves talking about the budget. I know, I agree with what Gary said about current items like substitute teachers and much, as we know that those aren't running. But we're going to see a lot of that result in next week's workshop. But if we weren't having that workshop or this was a different time of year and we didn't see the budget coming, those savings, in my opinion, that we've realized over the past years are for situations like this for a reimbursement. And it's not a payroll or a raise are totally separate, in my opinion.
I agree, Trey.
So do you guys want to take a little straw poll at this point about should we, should we give a stipend at all? I think that's the first, that's the first question.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry, go ahead, Matt. You weren't showing up on my picture, so I couldn't see you.
Okay. And my son just zoom bombed us over my back corner here a few minutes ago. So Bo had, you mentioned a lot of things at the start, like a printer and printer ink and paper and all of a sudden, you know. Do we have any idea of how extensively our teachers have pulled out, you know, their finances for that kind of stuff? I guess I'm just curious if we know this is really a challenge they're facing.
Just from personal experience, you know, some of those things. But no, I do not know of wholesale. We haven't surveyed the staff. I, you know, I'm sure your wife, obviously, I'm sure she could explain what she's had to come up with during this time.
Yeah, she could, and I'm sure I could too. But I guess my next question is, along your personal experience, has anyone asked you or any of the administration for this stipend?
No, sir, this request came from the board.
I guess hearing that, for me, and knowing that we are in the deficit, I'm just real frugal. I know we've made gains. I know we've put stuff in fund balance, but I just, I'm really hesitant. I'm really hesitant. Not a lot of money, but I don't know, I'm hesitant.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? I'm kind of shocked, to be honest. I feel as though we've all got things to do here, right? And I feel as though this was something that was originally put forth by the board, right? And now the questions that are being asked are, it's almost like we forgot about the conversations we've had over the last two years. So it's shocking to me, and I almost feel that there may be other reasons behind it. But it is not a lot of money in the scheme of things. It's not going to get us back to a balanced budget, that's for sure. But if we're not on board, if everyone's not on board with this, I don't want to do this on a, on 7-0 vote. I don't want to vote for $100 a month on a 4-3 basis. You know, I think this needs to be something that's united front. There's no guarantee if we don't provide this stipend to our teachers and our staff that they're going to get a raise this summer. I think Gary knows that. You know, he's brought that up when Bo mentioned it's a budget. So this is the only, in my opinion, opportunity to provide for our staff. You know, we tried to do it in the past. We were ruled by our attorneys that we couldn't do it because it wasn't written in the budget. We found money last August with the $2 million windfall from Hurricane Harvey. And the goal was originally, when that $2 million hit, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I feel like there was a common consensus that we needed to do what we could to get back to our staff at that particular point in time with some found money. Not all of it, but some of it. And so we're talking about $206,000 or $202,500. I feel like we've forgotten what we've all been talking about over the last few months. So I'll leave it at that, but I think it needs to be a 7-0 or we pass on this, you know? That's my thought.
Adam, I'll respond if you don't mind. I do recall those comments. I also recall getting at home that I would much rather pocket some of that money and give our teachers a long-term, permanent raise rather than a one-time stipend, a one-time, small, you know, attaboy, pat them on the back. And I'm just feeling really uneasy. I don't think $202,000 is going to make or break the difference on that. But, you know, we're talking about the goal of making sure that we have a balanced budget, which my one year on this, on this board has always been asking those questions. And we're getting very close to meeting that. And I would love for us to make sure we meet that. That's kind of where I'm coming from. The other side of it is, I mean, no teachers asked for it, right? So this is, this is us asking for it. I wouldn't necessarily think that we need to do something teachers aren't asking for. Most of them have been very appreciative that we immediately supported their paycheck in March. We immediately worked with Dr. Reese and said, this is what we want to do. And, you know, I also think that there's kind of an equity thing. Some folks may have a lot of reimbursable needs and things that they've done. Others may not. And so I just don't know that a blanket approach is what I want to say. That's how I recall it going down.
I want to chime back in just for a second, kind of in support of Adam's statements on that. I don't think, when we get done with this year, my napkin math on this is that we're going to come in a lot better than what we did, projected. That's based on before the school let out. If that's the case, we have a surplus this year. If we don't spend it now, if next year's projections are that we don't have the money to give raises, then there's going to be nothing given today, and there'll be nothing given in June as well. Whereas now, there is a need. There's 26 million people laid off. There's, half of my company's been laid off, 10% to 15% pay cuts across the board. I think in this situation, these teachers are working harder. They don't have to ask for it, but a $500 stipend isn't out of the question.
Yes, Trey.
So we keep saying balanced budget. These are mutually exclusive. This has nothing to do with this year's budget or next year's budget. This is, this is a one-time payment out of a savings account that we have. So we're talking about a balanced budget. And if we're talking about $300,000 in the $20 million savings account having any bearing on a raise next year, it makes no sense because they are exclusive of one another. I agree with Gary. That's a raise that might not happen. But right now, we're talking, we keep saying, we want to balance the budget. This has nothing to do with the budget. We're paying it out of a savings account. And to Gary's point, you're right, Matt, we can't sit here and say, okay, you know, Ms. Kirby spent $200 on supplies or Ms. Reese spent $350 on supplies. We don't know that. But Gary did say, is we do know that there's a lot of people in our community are suffering, and no matter what that money is or how that looks, it's not our responsibility, no, but it might help them out.
Trey, I don't think, you know, I think it's not appropriate to characterize it as completely unrelated. I think the two are closely related. I do agree that they're not, you know, that they are exclusive, two separate issues. I'm just trying to always critique what I see as a spending problem. And, you know, that's something I've done every month. I ask questions all the time about that issue. And so while this might not be directly a result of a really pretty healthy fund balance, I just think we've got to make sure our philosophy of spending being frugal is what we need to do because we don't know what the next, you know, year is going to hold, right? For enrollment, we don't know what the economy is going to do. And I don't know, it's just really, really a kind of a hard sell for me.
So since we are, since we are in open session right now, I think, I think we should go ahead and make a vote on whether we're going to have a teacher stipend or not at this point. So if somebody wants to make a motion, they can make that motion.
I'll make a motion that we agree to the stipend. And if you want to put a dollar amount to it, I'll go there as well. But I think we should have a stipend.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, so I have ayes from Gary, Adam, Trey, David, Matt. Were you an aye or an nay? I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear.
He's a nay.
Okay.
Let me unmute it so I can say I'm a nay, sorry.
Okay. And then Linda, an aye or a nay?
Nay.
Okay. So the motion passes five to two. And so at this point, the question is, how much? So, you know, really, we have two proposals here. The $300 proposal or the $500 proposal. Before I give my thoughts, where are you guys on this?
The $500 proposal is what relative to the budget overall? What's the total?
$337,000.
Yeah, okay. And that's still, and that's still, I'm not going to say it ensures us, but it suggests strongly we still have a balanced budget. Is that right, Bo? I'm not going to say it ensures us, but it suggests strongly, we still have a balanced budget. Is that right, Bo? No, sir. I, I believe that currently working with our CFO, we were looking at coming in at about a $2 million deficit for this year. Now, that was pre-March, most of April and May with the pandemic. And so in those three months, we're certainly going to make up ground. But I would not go so far as to say it will be a balanced budget in June the 30th, when this fiscal year ends.
Bo, I have a question on that. How, how are we going to be two in the hole this year if we were 4.8 ahead in March, based on an annualized spend rate?
In working with Chris, as you know, we adopted a 4.4, about 4.5 million dollar deficit. And it looked like we were trending positive about two and a half million, which left us to 2 million that I'm referencing as being still a deficit. And again, that's prior to the COVID-19 pandemic beginning, you know, in mid-March.
I know a lot of this would be speculation on your part. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know where Gary's kind of thinking. We, we, we know our budget is 80% labor current. And it's the, the, the staff workforce is approximately 80% of the budget. So the things that we're not paying, we could see that. Like you said, this was pre-COVID. So we might realize a little bit more of that, do mean even maybe say 80% of that 2 million. And then the balance would be the deficit or the, the surplus, I should say.
Yes, I think no doubt you're going to come in better than the 2 million. I'm just not certain that you're going to come in balanced.
Yes, Adam.
So, you know, I've said this in many, many months now. I'm a firm believer in you have to take care of the people that take care of you. That's a business principle. And, and, and our teachers right now are taking care of these students in a way that they never signed on for. Okay? They never signed on for this. We didn't ask them to do this. They're taking it on themselves to do this. I've seen how stressed out the moms are and the dads trying to help their kids learn at home. And so I can only imagine how stressed out these teachers are. So again, this money that we found, found, right, in August, the Hurricane Harvey money, $2 million that we didn't expect to get, we're talking about $300,000 of that. That's 15% of that money to give back to our teachers to say thank you very much for going above and beyond. We haven't been able to give you the raises that we've won too. We haven't been able to compete with the districts outside of us. We know that. We've all talked about it. The community talks about it. We have an opportunity here to talk fund balance from $20 million to $19,700,000 and provide $500 to the teachers that are busting their butts out there. And right now I'd say I'm all for it. So that's my vote. I vote $500.
Gary, you'd mentioned a second ago when you made the motion. I'm sure you've, you've crunched the numbers on it. You've got your little napkin around. I knew you had it somewhere. But you were kind of going somewhere with, with a stacked motion possibly on what you were thinking.
I, I, I will make the motion for $500 if that needs to be made at this time.
Do I have a second? Adam seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? But Linda and Matt?
Since I didn't vote for this stipend, do I vote for this? I, I don't know.
Yes.
Are we voting for?
I would think you could ask, Linda.
Well, are, if you have a spouse that, that is affected by this, should you abstain?
That was my question. And I apologize, Jim. I raised my hand when you said I to ask a question and I apologize. I wanted to ask, you know, I think there's a conflict of interest for me, at least if, you know, my wife could benefit from this, I need to probably abstain.
That's the board's decision. I'll do the same. I, I just know in the past, when there's been employees, we've approved raises, which I did my research on that today and that's what I was basing it on.
So, you know, Trey, I, I looked it up right before the meeting as well. And, you know, it's, it's a, the nepotism law is focused on hiring. And we are not hiring in this case. Dr. Reese, is that your understanding?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So legally, I, I think any one of us with spouses on the board could vote. Ethically, for me, just personally, I don't want to, I don't even want to come close to that line. So I will probably, I will probably abstain, Mr. Dawson.
But you voted no. Why abstain to start out with?
I'm sorry, what was that, Adam?
I said you voted no on the previous vote. I would thought and abstaining would have just taken you out of the entire discussion at that particular moment, I guess. So I guess I, I'm struggling with why would you vote no for one and then abstain for the next, right? Like
You're right. You're right. Because two reasons. First of all, I just thought of this more recently, just now. I did look at it right before the meeting. And secondly, you know, the result of the first vote could have been no effect to my spouse's stipend. In that case, there wouldn't have been an issue. Also didn't know that we were going to break these apart into two separate issues prior to the meeting starting. So I didn't, didn't think of that beforehand, but that's where I stand now that we're getting down to numbers.
So, so the only board members that don't have related people in the district would be Adam, Ergle and Linda?
Gary.
My wife doesn't teach in the district anymore.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I mean, I'm not sorry. It's whatever. You know what I mean? So I'm finding abstaining from that.
As well, if, if, if we want to know what's those four voting, that, that's a quorum, correct?
A quorum.
Yep. So Gary's.
I'm staying for the amount.
Gary's made the motion and Adam has seconded. So all in favor?
David Ergle says aye.
Okay. And all opposed?
Jim, I'm confused. Is this the motion for the $500?
Yes.
Is it for 675 employees or 710 employees?
We, we did not, that was not part of the the motion. The motion was just for a $500 stipend, but we didn't clarify that. So part of this, I guess we can clarify that as a board, but whether we approve it or not, who it's going to apply to. So Linda, are you, are you for or against this?
I'm against it.
Okay. So the motion passes $500 stipend. So let's just have that little discussion right now about who this is supposed to include. Is it the 675 that is on the, on the sheet that Bo presented? Or are we going to include those extra staff that, that Bo mentioned we could include?
We're looking at 25, including the nurses and librarians that have also been working during this as well.
Yes.
Yes.
And that will up it to 354,000, 35,000?
I thought he said 35 extra.
So you want to clarify how much more is this? Will we include those?
So the, the first number, 500.
Sorry, I had that on pause. I was trying to go back to the spreadsheet, but it is 35 and that includes 10 nurses, 10 librarians and 15 district employees, including your department directors, district. Is it, for example, Jada, Mullins, Special Programs, Meredith Berg in Special Education, Dewayne McFadden and Wendy Graves in elementary and secondary and would be part of that 15. So you've got 10 nurses, 10 librarians and then 15 individuals that are departmental directors that are involved in instruction and coming up with your continuity plan, working with staff on everything from, you know, the grading policies to when when we're going to do what. So that would be for 500, that's $17,500 for those 35 additional.
But the total.
455.
355.
We said it was 337,500. Yeah.
17, yeah.
Add 17 to it, it's 455,000.
That would be 117.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. No, no, no.
So the total would be?
355.
Yeah.
Can't add in the dark.
So does anybody have a strong opinion about that?
I believe if we're going to do it, we include them all.
I would, I would agree with that. I think that everybody is going above and beyond and everybody is spending money out of their own pockets to try to figure out this new normal. And I think they all deserve it.
I agree.
Okay. So I guess to make it formal, let's go ahead and take the vote about that. I don't think that we, since we've already approved the the, the stipend and the amount, I think we could probably all vote on this one. Because I don't really see a conflict of interest on this particular issue. So does somebody have a motion?
I'll, I'll move to improve, approve all employees included in the spreadsheet for the stipend.
So the, the 350?
350, 300, for a total of $355,000.
Okay.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Okay. So that's, that's the only action item that we had tonight. And so we don't, we can't discuss anything else right now. But and if I would just remind you guys to get all of your, be looking at your emails or the superintendent search stuff. And make sure that you provide all the email addresses and contacts for the focus groups. Okay. With that, I think we can go ahead and close, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you for the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
We have closed session, Jim?
No closed session tonight.
All right. Thank you.